Mayor here to bring official greetings from the entire city of Stonecrest. And I think it's nice that he took time out of his busy schedule to come out here to bring greetings to all of you who are here. I'm getting phone calls left and right, people say they're in, they're lost, they're in traffic, or whatever. But we're gonna start because you guys are here on time, and I think it's important to show respect. So I'm gonna bring up Mayor Larry, and then him bring greetings from the entire city, and then we'll get started with the state of District 5. So let's welcome him one more time.
Good evening, folks, I appreciate it. I wanted to thank the artist or your woman in Council District. Sometimes the smaller groups are the better groups. You can opportunity to find out more things that you really want to know about. And I'm on Councilwoman. The government has a very specific vision for her district, and along with the city of Stonecrest, I support. I just wanted to bring you official greetings from the city of Stonecrest. And I'm gonna hang around, just in case you've got any questions afterwards, and I have the high regard for your support, Councilwoman, if you want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So I have a little speech for y'all tonight. Y'all know I never do speeches to you, so you gotta get a real treat tonight. And I thought it was important, and I also have a brief presentation to just kind of go over where we are with District 5, and then American Chinese, and let you know a little about how that works for the entire city of Stonecrest. As you all know, there's immense power when you get a group of people together like us who have similar interests, and some of our interests, most of our interests are the same. We have more in common than we do that's different. For example, you might be saying, what do we have in common? What do we have in common? I think everybody in here is wanting us to build a beautiful, safe, livable, walkable community, one that you're proud to come home to. And I'm proud to tell you that we are on the way to getting there. It's been exactly about one year since all of the mayor and the council, including myself, were seated to represent you. And so as a result of that, I thought it was important for us to talk about where were we when we started, and where are we now? And that's why I called this this week to be a more state of District 5, so that we can go back to the beginning, back to April when we were seated, all the way through today, and be able to hold myself accountable, and be transparent to you, and to let you know where are we now, and where do we want to go, and how do we plan to get there. Now, it's gonna take more than two hours to do all of that, but for the sake of brevity, what we're gonna do, we're gonna get on some important key points, we're gonna just talk about where we started, where we are, where we want to go, my vision and the city's vision, where does my vision fit with the city's vision? And then if we have time, we'll take some Q and A from you, yes, we'll take some Q and A from the audience. So even though District 5 is a district, a district is where?
In the city.
District is in the city. So we're not broken up. In some councils, they run at large, which means they run in the entire city, but in Stonecrest, we run in districts. But the ultimate goal is that whatever happens in District 5, happens in the city, right? So we're all one city, so we don't want to talk about piecemeal in it, but what we do want to talk about is what have I done as your representative from the beginning to now, and then take some hard questions from you. I invited Newburgh out tonight, we had a chat about, you know, what's going on down at Newburgh, what's going on at the road, I'm gonna invite you on some flights, and they're here, so you can get real information. We're gonna talk about governance, you know, how do we make information available to you, make it easy, make it accessible, and be able to have it where you're able to just go online, and if you want to see and interact with what's happening with the city, you're able to do that via technology, and that's being worked on now as a citywide plan, which so we bring the smart city, innovative city, we're all working together. So what I'm trying to let you know is, what am I doing for you? Because only you all in District 5 can go over here and cast a vote for me, and so you hold me accountable for what am I doing to represent you, to be your voice. So with that being said, we're gonna go through a brief presentation that I labeled "Listening to Your Voice." So just an overview, the city is about to begin the squash projects. As you know, we have the largest share of the tax revenue. I don't know if you've seen shopping, but you should have noticed an extra one cent on your sales tax, right? Yeah, so when you see it, don't complain, just say yay! And next we have, we're working on now, some of you in here have been selected to be on a committee that the mayor put together, the comprehensive plan. The committee members have already been selected to represent all five districts. And so that team is in place, and we have a meeting this week to have our first meeting with representatives from each district. So what is the comprehensive plan? That's a 20-year plan. So what does that do? That tells you what is my city, what do I want my city to look like in 20 years, and how are we gonna get there? And versus a much elected official sitting in a room, we decided, and this is high sign, to pick representatives from each one of these districts to be able to be the voice of the district collectively as the city's voice. And so that will start this week. In a governmental agreement with the county, as you know, we only deliver how many services? Come on, this is education.
Three.
Right, we're delivering three services, but how many are truly active right now? We got two. I mean, we got two, but we took on three, but I'm pleased to tell you, and I'm gonna have the mayor in direct if he wants to, we have, we're gonna be taking on public works, and so we do have additional services coming in, but for now, we truly deliver two services. Planning and zoning, planning and zoning determines what comes into the city. Like, for example, do you want another burger restaurant? Or do you want a Papa Deli? That's what planning and zoning does. Code enforcement, what does that do? You got a neighbor with a junk car? You got a neighbor that won't cut the grass? Reinforce those things. And so that's important. So those two services are up and running, they're running strong. I think today I contacted planning and zoning to get a list of all the code enforcement violations in District 5, so we can take a look at it, and we can see where are most of these violations coming from. And then I did some graphs and charts so that I could see, are there pockets of violations in different areas? And if there are, how do I need your code enforcement to say, hey, you know, here it is where all these code enforcement violations are coming from? And then get with the mayor and the council and say, do we need to tweak something in our ordinance, in our laws? We're responsible for policy and making laws. And what kind of policies and laws? Things to make your life better. It makes your life better when your neighbor cut the grass. It makes your life better when someone's not parking a semi truck, you know, in front of your house so your kids can't quit. Now, HB 1060, that was a bill that failed to pass, it passed in the senate, it passed in the House, but it failed in the senate. So for now, that's not gonna come up again until next year. HB 600 passed, it's sent in the House in May, I love your signature. We'll talk about that later. Okay, planning and zoning highlights, that's gonna come up in a minute. Stonecrest have now formed a development business authority, I think I said it, Stonecrest Development Business Authority. And those are people who, it's a collective group of people, who will be working on special projects to attract business into the city of Stonecrest. And there are people represented from all of the issues on that particular community. But like, on the industrial park that we hear so much about, I'm the one for Dark I was here tonight, you know, we had, we got a lot of land, a lot of land in the industrial park. And so the question is, how do we work with those landowners to help develop and grow that land so that we can attract quality businesses? If you happen to have a tour in May, I'll be doing a bus tour of District 5, so we can see all the rich resources that we have right here in District 5. The overlay committee, I serve as the committee member on that. The purpose of that committee is to study, study and research city matters of interest that are related to our most important asset, Arabian Mountain. Arabian Mountain Park, you can't pick it up and move it out of here. Businesses can get up and move and go and do what they want to do. So for that Arabian Mountain, this time I'm moving, unless God moves it. And so we have to learn how to take advantage of the resources that we have here, and turn it into something that will attract quality businesses. Now, we probably don't want to deal, you know, 10-story buildings around it, because it's green space. But we have to, God knows, we have to protect that land with our very lives, because that is gonna be one of the most important ways that we're gonna be able to grow this city. Now, some of you in here may not know it yet, but your city, your homes are backed up to some precious, precious green space. So don't go running out of Stonecrest too quick, because you might miss out, okay? So that committee now is determining, what is it gonna be, what are the guidelines, what can be built on that land, what are the boundaries? And as I said, some of your homes back up to that green space, so if you're in Stonecrest, don't think about moving unless you just have to, because I can tell you now, some great things are coming to Stonecrest, and some of those great things will be initiated out of District 5, because most of the green space is in District 5. District 5 is the largest district, you're also the most vocal, you're the loudest, you're the biggest head in your area, but you're everything. Everybody, when y'all come to council meetings, people come over and they whisper in my ear, oh, there's District 5? I know right away, they gonna talk to me. And when you talk, I think I'll show you that I listen. So that's just a quick overview. So the green space we talked about, so the biggest advantages we have in District 5, we have the green space, but we have the high-end residential area, most of, there are hardly no businesses in District 5, and you know that. Hardly no businesses in District 5.
That's why we moved here.
Right, and that's what you're telling me, and that's what you tell me, but you also tell me, it would be nice if I had one or two just little nice quaint restaurants or coffee shops, you know, where in the evening, when I get off work or when my grandbabies visit, I don't have to go downtown to Gwinnett or to Rockdale, I could just go in my neighborhood and sit in a very nice place. We're working on that, aren't we, Mr. Mayor? We're working on that. We also have some opportunity for tax incentives at Woodrow and Evansville. Today, I talked to the Department of Community Affairs about the federal opportunity empowerment zone grant, it's tax incentives. We have one area, I believe, in District 5, that shopping center on the corner, that's the I-Sor, it's not in that Cinco station, so everybody know where that is. Okay, I pass it every day, and I'm like, this is I-20, you hop up at I-20, wouldn't it be nice if we could develop that into a nice center where you can go to a restaurant, a coffee shop, or, you know, just something very nice, and then renovate it to the Cinco? Well, see, you can visualize that, because that realistically is something that can happen. But that particular place, I'm waiting on them to get back with me, because if that fits in that opportunity zone, then government is, one good thing coming out of Washington, government is giving tax incentives to businesses to develop areas that are underperforming areas, and if not, you know my next thing is, right? If they don't want to bring Whole Foods, let's create Diane Foods. Let's get together in our own neighborhoods and put together coalitions and organizations. We have six multimillionaires in District 5. Two of them have met with me and said, I have land, and they've taken me out to look at the land, and they've said, what do you want to see developed on this land? How do we pull these pieces together and work with that development authority for the city, and tell them this is what we'd like to see in District 5? Now, keep in mind, I'm talking District 5, but where is District 5?
In the city.
It's in Stonecrest. So no matter what we develop, don't walk out here thinking that we're divided, we're together. No matter what happens in District 5, it's in Stonecrest. And a rising tide lifts all ships. But nothing gets done if you don't have a voice at the table. And believe me, I'm at the table for you. And so those are the things. Now, we have the Allen Institute, you know what that is, Entrepreneur Center, Allen Institute, and he works and does a lot with this community. And one of our biggest assets with education is we got the Arabian Mountain High School. The robotics club, the STEM club we're working on with Patricia Willis now to do a technology festival to showcase some of the things that we'd like to do in Stonecrest. What are our weaknesses in District 5? Somebody said few businesses and restaurants, but then somebody said that's also a strength, isn't it? It's also, who said? Who said we moved here because it wasn't? Right, what's your name?
Anne Hoffman.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman said I moved here, because there were a few businesses and restaurants there.
Thirty years ago.
Thirty years ago?
Yeah.
But she said it'd be nice to not have to track down I-20 and the traffic, to go to a nice little coffee shop.
It would be nice, I certainly like to see all the green space we have reserved, because that brings people from all over Atlanta, or all over Georgia, that come to Arabian Mountain. But yes, we have Stonecrest Mall, we have the area, if you're talking about Woodrow, that are already developed and paved, it would be wonderful to see some nice places come in to help.
Visualize that, because we're getting ready to claw our way out of the hole, okay? So visualize that. So even though some have defined in District 5 not having businesses as a weakness, I define it as an opportunity and as a strength. And so some of these can overlap, this is called a SWOT analysis that I put together. So we don't have many millenniums here, if we build some nice little fancy condos like flats, don't you think that would attract them?
Yeah.
This is just basic stuff, we're not talking rocket science. So I want you to know, we're not far off from where we from be. We got a couple of years under my leadership to get these things done, and that's what I plan on doing. So in order to get these people here, they want technology, right? You got grandbabies that like I do? They, my little five and six-year-olds are on technology. So we gotta do something to get those people here. So the opportunities that we have, and these opportunities are, I say they citywide, but I'm talking District 5 now, revitalization and growth, that's what we need, right? Revitalization, we need to revive. Let me tell you, when I campaigned, I have a sign there on there, Evans, not Evansville, Brownsville, and Long Island. Everything's boarded up on that corner, but there's something that's going in on the other corner. But the boarded up building still aggravates me, and I don't mean like Robin by there, and it reeks of the things. So we're gonna get rid of that, we got to get rid of that. And so when I say revitalization and growth, I'm talking about these white properties, okay? That we gotta do something with, they've been there for years. I thought it was five, six, or seven years, somebody told me, oh, no, much longer than that.
As long as we've lived here, they've been there.
And that's too long, they've been there too long. And once we start doing these things, guess what happens? We can then start creating some jobs and attracting some quality businesses. But to do that, ladies and gentlemen, we gotta clean up our own house, but we gotta realize that the house is not completely dirty, because we got some resources to work with. We got things that can only then pick up and run off with. So we're gonna work with what we have to do what we need to do, and then we're gonna get at the table and bring in other new types of resources. So what are some of the threats in District 5? We just talked about it, the white properties. I talked to Frank Alexander this week about coming out to do a special presentation to you to talk about how landbanks can work. Now, it's been said that we need a lot of money for it, but I was at a convention last week, and I talked to people who are putting these together, and we got a great one working right here in Georgia, a couple of them. We're gonna go tour some of those facilities, and you're gonna see the before and after, that's gonna be part of the tour I'm putting together for you. There may be a cost for the tour, for the gas on the bus and all that, but it's so small, you need to go. But we're gonna talk about that. And then we're gonna form 501(c)(3)'s in order to drive those things, and they don't be chaired by you, not me. I'll just be kind of overseeing what you're doing, but I won't be chairing them. You guys then will be driving your own destiny, so if I'm dead and gone, you can keep the truck moving, and that's what we need to do. I think it's a wise proverb, say you give a man a fish, he eats all day, you teach him how to fish, he'll eat the rest of his life. So that's what we're gonna do in District 5, that's gonna be how we grow. And then we do have a high percentage of rentals. I won't even say where they are, some of you already know. And your neighborhoods, if you get too many rentals in there, you're happy about it. So you do not want to have a lot of rentals. Now, renting is good and bad, but you just don't want to have a high-end neighborhood once you start getting a lot of rentals. And in my neighborhood, in Yorksville, I was the HOA president, and you know what I did under my leadership? I made sure that we added to our vows and covenants a tight percentage of, this is how many rentals we don't allow in here. And that happened under my leadership. People got mad and kicked me screaming, and I wasn't very comfortable. I was president for two years, and everything that I tried to do, that they kicked me screaming, some on past, some didn't. Guess what they were doing now, under the new president? Yeah, so it makes me feel good, but the point I'm saying, sometimes no pain, no gain. Well, sometimes you gotta go make the hard decisions to get things done, and not be afraid to do it. But you don't want to have your high-end home, and now your neighborhood is full of rentals, but there's nothing wrong with renting. I've been a renter, I've been a single mother, I've been in apartments, I've been in all these situations, and I'm glad somebody trusted me to rent their property, and what I took care of their property. So you don't want to walk out here and say, you know, I don't, because some of us, that's how we get to the next step. And the other thing I want to add before I go to the next slide, if we want to help, we got homeless people, we got people with elders, we got people with disabilities, we got troubled youth, we got people with all types of elderly things. I volunteered today, I did a half-day with United Way. And one of the things, and I've been volunteering with United Way for about 10 years, and one of the things that came up, and I pretend that's true, if we want to help the poor and the elderly, and those in need, we got to first help ourselves. You can't build a high-end world-class community when you're just building for those who need. You got to build first for what the community needs to grow, and then you can lift up the poor and the homeless and the elderly. You don't have to say, if we lose cabin pressure, I was on my flight last week, first thing they said, if we lose cabin pressure and oxygen masks drop, what are you gonna do? Over yourself, if you have a child with you, you can't save the child if you can't breathe. You can't save anybody. Relax, to build Stonecrest, we got to first build it, build the city, not up today or yesterday, but the city of tomorrow, and it may be perceived we leaving some behind, but we're not. What we're doing, we're paving a way for those. And what I'm getting ready to do is do a partnership, work closely with the city council and the mayor, to bring in all these different organizations, faith-based and all of them, so we can reaffirm what is our role in this community. Sometimes we get a little lost, even at our homes, sometimes we get lost with what those roles are. But it's okay, as long as you recognize we got to go back to the basics if we want to build District 5. And we got to take ownership, you got to hold me accountable, you accountable, our council accountable, our mayor accountable, you got to hold your state rep accountable, your congressman accountable, your president, you got to hold everybody that touched Stonecrest accountable. And I'm in favor of that, and I don't apologize for it. Now, so the vision, this sort of city is also, like I said, the innovative city, that's bad, it's gonna be, I mean, I have a beautiful video to show you, like, it was two minutes late, it won't play, but the video is gonna show you exactly what that means, and so we're gonna have another meeting, and we'll get the video working, and you'll get to see it. And what I did, I integrated some pieces of Stonecrest where it can be very innovative and technology savvy, you know, and I know that the mayor and the council, all of us are working on what does that look like, but I have a little video, and I have to, either I'll send it to you on an email with this PowerPoint, okay? And then you can view a vision, the real vision of what would that corner look like when it's transformed. Wouldn't that be cool to just see what it could look like? District 5, I feel so good. So I want to honor her for her community work, and that would be Ms. Amina Elamine, who is over, who works heavily with the Chaparral HOA. Ms. Elamine, come up here. So the mayor and I appreciate the work that you've done in your HOA, and somebody got a camera, because I don't see my photographer here. You know, we so, we got photographers right now. So Ms. Elamine, from me, and I know the mayor appreciate your work, because you are in his city, I just want to say thank you so very much. Mayor, get up here for the photo log. Thank you, Ms. Elamine, appreciate the service. Now, do we have all these people up together? Do we have Jalisa Hunter, Anisha Smalls? Nope? Francine Crawford? Now, all the food at my breakfast, all the food at my breakfast, and I mean, it wasn't complimentary. It was grits. Now, I'm a southern gal, I was born in Bainbridge, Georgia. I had grits, eggs, I had bacon, sausage, biscuits, fruit, man, I had so much. I'm blaming you for the pounds I gained. She was running all over the place with me to plan this entire breakfast. Not only did she do that, but she catered all the food for what, 130 people? She catered all the food out of her own pocket. This person have died phenomenal things for me. Not only that, when I got re-elected, she came to my home, I had a small event at my house, she came in there, she brought her teen with her, and they went and re-laid, transformed my whole kitchen. And I looked at it, and I had no idea it was still my table, because they made it so beautiful. Ms. Idonia Hunter, she did so well. These people did not know they were getting any awards tonight, because that's how I do it. I don't tell. And if they don't show up, I keep having events, and when they there, I'm like... Now, Ms. Hunter, the mayor and I appreciate her community service, we want to thank you for looking out for us. And this is for you, and we're gonna get a photo with the mayor. Okay, I think that's it, Francine Crawford's not here. Okay, so what we want to do now, and I'm gonna have the mayor participate, if you don't hide, he's a big boy, he can handle this stuff. Okay, what we gonna do now, you know, we got some minutes left, and we're gonna open it up to you. Yeah, it's seven o'clock, so we got some time left. We're gonna open it up to you now for Q and A, and please be respectful with your questions. I never had an issue with y'all, and y'all fight for me, but you know it. So what I want to do now is take any question that you might have about where we came from, where we are, and where we trying to go. And before we do that, because I see the hands, let's, I think, for... Any other elected officials here other than Ms. Johnson? We have Eric Hubbard in the back standup. Mr. Hubbard is the director for the congressman office. Anybody else here that I miss, that's a need. Oh, let me honor Elder Stokes and Dennis Meeks from Newburgh, Elder Stokes from Newburgh and... Thank all of y'all for being here tonight. So now we're gonna open it up, and the mayor now will tag team your questions, and you can direct questions either to me, him, or either one of us, doesn't matter. All right, I saw hands go up, so Ms. Carter?
Eddie, if you ever need help, this is about like, those specific properties you refer to, are they old, private, and those who simply have to get that property from a private home, or you can do something with it too, like rehabilitate it or just tear it down and replace it, or is that a public property?
Okay, it's private property now, but most of the time when we're working with landbanks, the owners are generally willing, and I say generally, willing to come to the table to work out some kind of deal, because it's boarded up for a reason, right? And so generally, if you come into the table and saying, hey, we'd like to be able to do something with this property, and they gotta be willing to, you know, give it up, an eminent donor... and they gotta be willing to, you know, give it up, eminent domain, it's not an issue in this, so read the laws. So, we're not taking anybody's land from them. And then after so many years, and some, depending on how we structure the landbank, after a couple of years, when it's a tax-producing property, they can buy it back, or they can get it back.
Not buy the church, but buy.
You mean locate it nearby.
Yeah, physically buy it.
Okay, where is it?
Yeah, I would like to know where it is.
It's on Wood, okay, if you go down Evansville, make a left, if you're coming from Brownsville, make a left on Woodrow. It's right there going down to Newburg on the right-hand side.
Do you know the name of it?
Name of the road? I don't know, does the name of the road?
I, I have two, I have two really simple questions. The first one is about the road. Um, that road is coming off as a connection, uh, as a continuation of, uh, LaConea Industry. Uh, the only place you can go on that road is you can go right onto Newburg's property and go around to Chupway. Or you can go left and come up to Evansville, both of which are heavy truck restricted. Uh, no, no heavy trucks are supposed to be there. So, before they open that road, is it possible that there is a large sign pa- placed there that forbids trucks from coming onto that road, because they can't go anywhere? And as you know, Woodrow, when it comes across Evansville, is a restricted street with no through traffic. So, I think that's one thing that would really make us happy, because those trucks, once they get in there, they're gonna start wandering up and down Evansville, or trying to take a shortcut to get back to, uh, I twenty. So, that, that's one of my concerns. The second part is the, uh, twenty thirteen LCI on Stonecrest, which, uh, was sort of like a thirty-five-year master plan, including housing and everything. And, you know, I, I, I think I'm, I, I support that plan, because I think it's a plan that's very, very well thought out. It was done by ARC and all the commissioners and the state and everybody. So, I was wondering, could we look at trying to get some of that implemented? And also, as you know, Rockdale County on flat shows is starting to build this thing called Evermore, which is going to be, uh, very similar to the I twenty, uh, I twenty Glenwood connector where the new Kroger is, with that type of housing, that type of very small business, uh, businesses there. So, I'm wondering if we can look at getting something like the Ever, Evermore project here in, uh, Stonecrest, since we're, they're harping on the fact that they're close to the airport and close to I twenty, but we're even closer. And we're, so, I mean, it might be a good thing for us to look at, and it looks like it's something we could get done, since we already have the twenty thirteen Stonecrest LCI, that's already been looked at and approved by ARC and everybody.
Your first question about the signage, um, I guess if it's county or state, I don't know if the city would...